Good evening. My name is Eric Lindstrom and I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the Inland Wetland Commission meeting for the town of Monroe. It is Wednesday, November 13th, and it's 7:05 PM. Will everyone please stand to recite the pledge of allegiance?
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of Wisconsin, a nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
I will take a roll call of members of the commission and staff present during tonight's hybrid meeting. Please answer here or present, starting with myself, Eric Lindstrom here. Ryan Kelly, Vice Chairman.
Here.
Rick Smith.
Here.
Jim Stewart, Professional Engineer.
Here.
Benjamin Xavier, Secretary.
Here.
Paul Fernandez.
Here.
Mark Zamare.
Here.
Kathleen Gallagher, Planning and Zoning Administrator.
Here.
And Andrew Brodmann, Inland Wetland Enforcement Officer.
Yeah.
Where we start, I'll read our mission statement and how the meeting will proceed. Inland Wetland Mission Statement: The objective and purpose of the Inland Wetland Commission is to provide for the overall protection and preservation of the inland wetlands and watercourses within the town of Monroe. The meeting procedure: Please note that this meeting is being held, is being conducted utilizing electronic equipment in compliance with state law Public Act 21-1. As such, this meeting is being recorded and will be available to the public in compliance with state law. If you are attending remotely, please remember to mute your microphone while speaking. Anyone participating remotely should state their name and title if applicable at the outset of each occasion that such person is speaking. All votes taken during which any member of this body or participating remotely shall be taken by roll call unless the vote is unanimous. The chat features will not be utilized nor considered during this meeting. In the normal course of our meetings, we will hear public hearings and other applications. The protocol for public hearings is to have an applicant make a presentation to the commission during which and afterwards the commission will be asking the applicant questions. I ask that the applicants keep their presentations as concise as possible. The commission will then review town, staff, and other independent comments. The meeting will then be open for public comment. I'll ask that all comments be made to the chair or commission. After any or all comments pro and opposition of general nature are made, the applicant will be given an opportunity to respond. Please keep comments or questions direct or a time limit of three minutes may be imposed. It is not necessary that the applicant respond, but generally in their best interest to do so. There will be no further opportunity for new questions unless new materials entered in as evidence or testimony during their response. Please keep all comments pro and con specific to inland wetland-related matters. Other applications that involve a public hearing will follow a similar format with the exception that there will be no public comments allowed. The meeting follows our published agenda unless otherwise amended. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No changes to the agenda.
At this time, we would like to invite the public to come up and speak, if there are anybody in the chambers, which it looks like there aren't, or anybody online, to speak in a general nature, anything not pertaining to what's on tonight's agenda. Anyone? Okay, moving on to regulated activities. All right, we have an application for acceptance of a regular hearing for determination. IWC 2024-25, file number 1504100, cross over road, addition to rear of existing home with new septic tank and stormwater gallery all within the Upland Review area.
This is an application for a determination of a regular or a public hearing. As mentioned, there is a proposed addition steps and a deck in the rear of the property. What is being brought to this commission is there's also a stormwater gallery, a stormwater management system of Coltex, and then an outlet pipe and a riprap velocity dissipator that directly goes into the wetlands that's within 25 feet of a wetland, so that's why.
That's why it's here.
To you guys, just because there's therefore disturbance that close to the wetlands. I have done a preliminary review of this. I just had a couple of small comments for them. They're showing self fence going directly down the line into the wetland. We're going to ask them to relocate that so that it's slightly outside of that area. And we had another, we also had other just very small comments for them related to some housekeeping items, including some noticing that needed to be done. They needed to provide a wetland bond form to the engineer and add wetland markers to the drawings. However, they did talk to James about the stormwater report before they submitted this application, so he's already done a preliminary review of the stormwater, doesn't have any issues with it. So from staff end, it's a pretty simple application for review.
Does this go to staff for approval?
Yes. Yeah, you could vote on that. You could vote to make it an agent approval if you so chose.
We go there. Does anybody have any basic questions? Not that we have the applicant here, but does anybody have any questions? Start me on there.
No questions.
So the purpose of the, it's obviously for retention, but what, why are they doing this? What, their current fields don't match their need, but why?
They're increasing, so anytime that they increase their impervious surface on site, they have to collect it and treat it. So I don't think we've ever run into a situation where someone already has an existing stormwater system that has additional capacity that can handle whatever increase in impervious surface they're proposing from a addition to the house. So 99% of the time, they have to put in a new stormwater system, and so they're putting in a new stormwater system to deal with the increase of impervious surface, to manage it.
You're putting in.
People have no stormwater system, to be clear. It's not even just, it just doesn't exist, usually.
They have a deck and they're putting in slabs of, for a patio?
They're proposing a deck, an actual addition to the house. Proposed addition, proposed steps, and a proposed deck.
They're not proposing anything to the septic fields at this point?
No, not, we.
It seems like their area is up against the proposed.
There's a new septic tank.
There's a new septic tank, so they're going to just, okay. The health department will figure it out.
What was the option one and two? Like, why did they feel the need to have to show two options? Try to carry on. Do we know?
Wait, I don't.
I'm just wondering why they, why do we need an alternate? Just carry it.
Oh, you're talking about for the kitchen additions?
Yeah.
I mean, that has to do with the interior, you know, we don't, from a wetlands perspective, we don't. They're just showing what the potential, I don't even think that is option.
It's like option one has. Alternate one has an option one with it on the right hand side.
Yeah, I think that's the only one they had to show the interior, and so that's what they're giving you, but it's not optional. It's what's shown on their proposed plans by RJ Gallagher Jr. and his assistants.
I, action three.
It's not in either one. Right, you're right. It's not this one, it's.
Yeah.
As it relates to disturbance associated with the wetlands, the interior addition, what's happening inside zoning, we'll work that out of what that has to be. We can follow what's shown on the survey and what's shown on the RJ Gallagher plans, and those do match what's shown on the survey and the RJ Gallagher plan.
Okay.
All right. Right, next slide. Do you have any more questions? Is there any question?
No, I don't think so.
Move that we go to agent approval.
Hold on. Jump ahead. Mr. Xavier.
I'm good.
I'm sorry. I got the odd, well, that's me. I do.
You had your turn.
Well, it's not a question. It's just a suggestion that adding a regular hearing because it is residential and it abuts other properties. At least, I suppose that maybe an agent approves it. If it's not a public hearing, maybe that's not necessary. Thinking it aloud.
I think that's a good idea. I would second that if you want to oppose public hearing. I've seen it heard.
Public hearing.
We have three options here. We have a motion to have it be processed as an agent approval. We can have it be a regular hearing, which means there's no public hearing. It gets processed the way we typically process a regular hearing. And then a public hearing, which includes noticing, making it a public hearing, putting it in a newspaper, allowing the public to come out, noticing hundreds of butters. So there's really three different options: agent approval, regular hearing, or public hearing.
I would favor a public hearing.
A public hearing?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, like you said, it abuts number of people.
Well, everything abuts somebody, so if that's the criteria.
Well, you need to have, your reasoning for a public hearing has to be the potential impact to the wetlands.
Well, it's just that.
Or public interest.
So they're placing this field in the proximity of the pond and in front of the yard. I just, I, it's probably how I'm seeing it, so I don't know. If I was a neighbor, I'd be interested in having an opportunity. I don't know that people will, but I'd see that pond and I'd see that they're right there.
Yeah, my suggestion was not, it was not necessarily a public hearing, just a regular hearing, for us to be able to ask and understand some additional questions.
Okay, I'm going to withdraw my motion reluctantly.
But I do, I, so I don't think, I don't know that I think that there's.
You guys will regret it, but.
December is going to be boring without something.
Thank God. Can't have that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I motion for a regular hearing just so that the commission can hear from the applicant and learn more about the plans and have some more time to review, review the plans.
All right, we have a motion for a regular hearing by Commissioner Kelly. Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Second, Mike. Commissioner Xavier? All favor?
Aye.
Okay. Regular hearing it is.
And we discussed this a little bit beforehand, but just for the record on tape, Mr. Brodmann is a butter and therefore is not reviewing this application. I will be reviewing it before the inland wetlands.
That's, yeah. Save that for next month. All right, we have, let's see, no regular meetings to discuss, no public hearings to discuss. No deliberations, pond releases, no agents reports, approvals, enforcement.
Enforcement, so 590 Main Street. I had issued a letter of violation. They were storing recreational vehicles within Upland Review area. As soon as I did that, they removed those vehicles and I left it at that. 56 Lorain Drive.
Was there a fine imposed or not?
No.
You just let them take it away in time?
Yes, yep. It was, there were four recreational vehicles. They were being stored on lawn, and they removed them and, yeah. 56 Lorain Drive, potential clearing of wetland, of wetlands and upper review area. So a resident had called and noticed that some equipment was being brought into the end of a cul-de-sac, and it was land clearing equipment. And I went out there, took a look at it, and it was real land clearing equipment, so I issued a voluntary site inspection. So I went out there, met up with the homeowner out there, and they were getting ready to do a lot of clearing, a lot of brush, fallen trees, branches, all around a pond and all within the Upland Review area. So I informed them that they were, that this is a regulated activity, and if they, if they want to continue doing the work, that they would have to come to the commission and get a permit for that. They removed the equipment out of the Upland Review area, moved it up onto dry ground. And it's up to them now whether they want to go ahead and continue the project and present it to the commission for approval.
I would like to say Andrew really took this seriously because he saw this as an opportunity to prevent a violation before it happened. Normally, we don't seek out when we think a violation, you know, may occur, but he saw this as an opportunity to really have a really big impact, to stop something, stop something before it started, and had to go to extra lengths to make contact in a timely manner and was super respectful about, you know, the entire process. And this was a really big win for the inland wetlands department that he was able to have a really good relationship with the landowner and make sure that there wasn't a tremendous amount of clearing of land that we then retroactively had to deal with and beguile.
How was that received by the owner?
Not well. He wanted to really clean up the area, and I think his intention now is to clear it the rest of the area. I printed out a map and showed him where the Upland Review area is, and anything outside the Upland Review area, he's going to clean up, you know, within the woods, and he wants to clean it up because it looks like a mess. He did say that cleaning up in the, in the wetland area, he said this wetland area is sort of stagnant, and it's stagnant because of a lot of fallen trees and roots. And so he feels like it would be beneficial to the wetland to have this area cleaned up, in which case I told him he needed to, you know, go through the proper channels to do it. And, you know, he said, "This is my land, I'm allowed to just do what I want with it." And I informed him that there are regulations that prevent that. But yeah, that land clearing equipment, like it was some pretty heavy-duty equipment, so it could have been cleared pretty quickly. My sense is he may, at this point, just abandon the area and just take care of the clearing and the rest of his property, but we'll see. Any questions? Any comments?
Last, just thank you.
No, you're right. Appreciate it. Should we vote on a raise?
And 30 Pepperidge Road, we got a report that some land was being used close to the wetlands, or what they thought was wetlands. And it was more of a zoning issue because they were running a, the claim was that they were running a business out of the home. But when we went out there, they're, they may be in a zoning violation because I think they are, from GIS, they are not even on their property anymore. They're on an abutting property, and it is wetlands back there. And they've cleared a lot of vegetation, put in driveways, sheds, and sort of a little nursery, growing plants. The residents were here. Tonight, they had showed up, but they don't really need to be here tonight because they're being compliant and they're having the property surveyed and the wetlands delineated. Once we have that information, we'll have more information to talk to them about. So I thought it was a little premature to have them come in at this point. So they're going to get the property surveyed so we know exactly where their property line is, and the wetlands delineated so we know exactly where that is and see how far they're into it, if they are. One additional note on that. In doing some research, there was a similar violation back in 2013, same owners, for the same issue encroaching upon wetlands. And it was, it was resolved. So there was a letter saying, from the wetlands, the previous agent saying that the situation was resolved. But now we're, I think, further into it.
Was it resolved?
They deter, they, there was a, there's a path that goes through the wetlands, and they determined that that path was there previously and not made by the residents. So they allowed them to leave it as is. But also in there, it said that, that where they are keeping their, their plants is getting close to the wetlands and not to go any, not to go past that line, and it seems like it's way past that line, so.
Are they selling these plants? Is this a business?
Uh, that I have no documentation of.
There are some associated zoning violations as well.
What's that?
There's some zoning violations.
There are some zoning violations as well.
As it relates to use and things of that nature.
And that's being addressed as well. So once we get the survey back, we'll know exactly where the property lines are, where the wetlands are, and then we can see if the driveway is actually in wetlands or just in Upland Review area. Either way, there's going to be a restoration or. Yeah.
Do you have a timing of when all that should be?
Surveyor will be there. Actually, she was here. Surveyor was there today, but the wetland delineation is still a couple of weeks out, two separate companies. We will know more.
Anything else on their enforcement?
Nothing more on enforcement.
All right, so moving on, no permitted as a right, no correspondence. So moving into general discussion, so we need to approve some minutes. So we have October 9th and October 23rd minutes. Review on the page?
Yeah, through the minutes, looks like the October 9th, we added what Commissioner Smith was talking about with the thermal events for the Cambridge. Going through, re-listening, I'm all right with that, if that's okay with you, Commissioner Smith.
Yes, I just, I took the. You guys advised me to go to town council, I mean, planning and zoning, so I did. That went fine. I just, you know, I'm satisfied. I just, I just wanted to make sure of this. Thank you.
So then, if there's no other issues with the October 9th, I think we can go ahead and make a motion to approve the minutes for October 9th?
We have a motion to approve the minutes for October 9th. Do we have a second?
On second the motion?
We have a second. Mike Commissioner Kelly, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
And then the same thing went over the October 23rd. I came in today. I don't see any big issues. So I'm okay with also having a motion to approve the minutes for October 23rd.
Do you have a motion to approve the October 23rd minutes? Do we have a second?
A second.
Second, Mike Commissioner Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
Public outreach?
I believe you're still working on.
Yeah, I'm working on a public outreach pamphlet about wetlands, and I just need time to put it together.
The, sorry, I was going to.
Something else, or still on outreach?
We can still go on outreach. I have another outreach item, but it's separate from this.
So it's obvious from tonight's, you know, violations that you're facing and stuff that we've talked about as well. I'm sure we're all aware that the public needs to have a better understanding of what we, how we can help them, and how they need to talk to us when they're going to be in the wetland for the year. So I think it's great, I, one thing I noted is that PNC did a great article last February about what they do, and that was, that was a nice way of getting it out there as well, so.
We can talk to Bill, we think.
What was it?
Bill Bittar came and interviewed Chairman O'Reilly, myself, I believe, Bill Ofer as well, and maybe Terry, that just talked about how planning and zoning has to evaluate applications coming in, what statutes were held to, what regulations were held to, and kind of.
Was it?
It's not opinion-based, it's more, you know, regulatory-based.
Was it an article in the paper?
In the sun.
Okay.
But that's another option we can think about, maybe talk to Bill Bittar.
Does it point back to the website for, you know?
We could direct this.
For purposes, so it's in the paper once, but.
Mark Zamare says, "Make sure you look at the regulations." You know, I mean, we, you know, we could fashion it with Bill. Bill's great.
Yeah, yeah, no, we could ask.
Whatever you say is important.
Well, so you can only point it back to our website if we actually post something on our website that explains the details of it. It's what I'm getting at, right?
Yeah.
So I don't think we do that. I think you know what I'm.
You're trying to make it a collected effort.
Like, I think we should have some sort of storage location on each of our websites, including the inland wetlands site, where we have information that, once we have, I think before we have the outreach with the public, we have to, we have to point them to someplace going forward as to, hey, you could always look here. And then on the site, you have different pockets of information that they could always.
Frequently asked questions type.
Right.
Yeah.
Scenario. Lots of terms.
Right.
All right, right, right.
Town Volunteers Manifesto.
And then maybe.
MonroeCT dot.
And maybe then, you know, links to, right, because these newspaper articles never go away, right? So then maybe links to the articles, back out to the articles, because if there are people that never see that newspaper article online or whatever, when they go, yeah, when they go to our website, and we say, "Go to the website, go to the Monroe Inland Wetlands website", there's a bunch of links there, we point to the newspaper articles, right? Because if they're well, it sounds like that was well-received, but if I were to go to the PNC website, would I ever know how to get there?
So we've since thought for the commissioners as far as how we can make this happen, but.
Who's responsible for the town website?
Um. We have planning and zoning staff that volunteers to, like, deal with the forms and the other stuff, just because it's really hard to do all the stuff through IT, so they are able to do that, so upload the exhibits and things of that nature. But who deals with it holistically is really just the IT department, and we work within the constraints that we have. But we can create a pamphlet and we can put that link somewhere, you know, on the website. So we do have some availability to do some of those things. I think we do the most we can in an independent document or series of documents, and then just put it on the appropriate place that we have access to.
It seems like there are a couple of things. I mean, I think we're all saying the same thing, but perhaps a pamphlet about what the wetlands does and what they, what they, you know, similar to what planning and zoning put out there through an article, but maybe in the form of a pamphlet, right? And then there's also just the general, how does a, how does a town meeting work? Like, the mode, like, that may be something better presented on the website, on the front page of the website, you know, like, I feel like that's something that people don't understand.
Well, I think the pamphlet, right, so what I'm getting at is that the pamphlet shouldn't just be a one-time occurrence where, hey, I sent out a pamphlet six months ago. Okay, well, I don't know that, right? I'm just kind of getting involved now for the past couple of months. I want to know everything that was previously discussed, all the information. Go to our website. There's a link to get to it, right? So some sort of folders that, and I think that may be better left to this commission to kind of govern what that looks like, because you don't want to have 10 different key presses just to get to one thing, right? So I think, you know, this commission would know fast, hey, how visible do we want it? Do we want to be able to have the public get to it in one or two key presses, right? As opposed to, because once you start hunting and pecking, you know, 10, 15 keeper, nobody's going to do that, right? So again, I think you're right. We're all saying the same thing, but like, just have it readily available all the time by going to like a one-stop shop, which we have a great, you know, location, right?
Yeah, but no, we can upload to the inland wetland page or the inland wetland commission.
There's minutes there, there's.
We have access.
Right?
Well, to your point, the agendas, meeting minutes, and meeting packets are buried.
Yeah, they're not easy to find.
They're not easy to find. That's a click to a click to a. That's a click to 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 a click.
Very cascading.
It's, 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 it's tough for the public to manage, for sure.
Oh, the commissioners.
We do have access to, like, staff has access to like the inland wetland commission landing page, our forms page and, um, I think.
And regulations.
And our, and, and just our inland wetland page, so the commission page, the forms page and the inland ones page, and we can house stuff there if we want to. Um, again, it's, I don't know if we can make folders in those locations, but we can add lists, but we can ask IT about maybe.
I think what I would ask them is, the folders are behind the scenes, right? I think what I would ask them is, how can you put different visible widgets on the page, right? Because visual is always good for people. I see this, I'm going to click on that. I know that that's going to go to a location that will take me to the minutes. Like right at the front of the page, here's another widget that shows, here's where all the videos are. By the way, the videos are hard to navigate. And then here's another widget that gets to articles for the past six months, right? Or articles for 2023, like visuals are good, like if you have these different widget boxes that you could click on, that's great for the public, right? Because not everybody is technically, you know, that way, right? So visuals are always good. Anyways, just ideas, but.
All right, and the other items on that public outreach. So we as a department have been a little sidetracked because last week we were told that the Voices will no longer be posting legal ads in the print copy of the Voices anymore. So when we have four potential legal notices that have to be put out for inland wetlands. I'm going to sidetrack for one second, which is, for example, 100 Cross Hill Road that was on tonight, they submitted the application last week, there's a receipt date of the first regularly scheduled meeting, which is tonight. The public has 14 days to petition for this application to be a public hearing, because you guys voted to have it as a regular hearing. If the public disagrees with that, they think it should be a public hearing, they're allowed to petition it. 18 years and older, 25 people in the town is permitted to do that. Nobody really knows that, that they have that legal instrument to use. And so what our local inland wetland regulations does is we publish pending applications in the newspaper in order to let people know that, one, the application is there and two, that they can do the petition, it's actually part of the legal notice. So that's one time that it goes in the, the paper as legal advertisement. If it becomes a public hearing, it has to be noticed twice in the newspaper. Um, in order to let people know that there's a public hearing coming out. And then once this commission makes a decision, that gets put in the newspaper as well. If something is an agent approval, once Andrew approves it, that also gets placed in the newspaper and there's, um, 14 days for them to appeal the decision to this commission if they so choose. Statutorily, it has to be in a newspaper with general circulation in the municipality that the commission is at. So the Voices is the one that most people have access to. Without that, we now have to go to C T Post. So that's the only potential option. One, we're all completely frustrated by this, there's a paywall. So in order to be able to do this, even a digital account, you're going to have to like look at the legal ads digitally. You have to pay for it or you have to pay for a subscription for an actual delivery. So this is an issue for you guys, it's an issue for, um, planning zoning, it's an issue for zoning board of appeals, it's just an issue across, it's an issue for the town clerk, it's an issue across the board. So as it relates to public outreach, we've just been trying to like find a solution to it, but we need to really change gears this week to let the public know this is going on. I've mentioned it at the planning and zoning meetings, I literally mention it to anybody that comes in to talk about anything, because we want the public to know that unfortunately, the Voices is no longer, they're going to be the location where they're going to be able to find out um, public hearings and things of that nature. Um, there is a bill in front of state legislator that would switch it out of the newspaper and allow it to go to digital forums, so we would have to do a better job at our website to create something that's easily accessible to the community. Um, but if it's a state statute, I think that would give everybody the motivation to kind of do it.
They say when they might actually make a decision on that?
They were supposed to do it last year. And there was just other things that were more of a priority, it got pushed to the side. We talked to our state rep and we are hoping that because this affects 14 different communities, 15 different communities, um, hopefully they'll do it in the next session this winter.
Um, they, I hope they realize newspapers are evaporating, like they don't.
Which is why this is drafted, which is why this is already drafted. People saw the writing on the wall, they created this house bill, you know? Not intentional, uh, they created this house bill, it's there, they just didn't get to it.
I mean, we can hopefully proactively start posting things on our website. I assume we have a Facebook page.
Yeah, planning zoning.
Not that that's legal, but at least we could, it's there and, you know, if we have to flip the switch, like, well, we've already got a process.
And I know everybody hates hearing this, but like, it's, it's time that stat, like, the amount of time it takes for us to track every application, put it in the newspaper, get the invoice, pay the invoice, rectify it against the budget, check to make sure it actually got published in the newspaper, put copies in the file, you know, do all that. It's a tremendous amount of time. So if that gets taken away, yes, staff then has time to do the digital stuff, but for me now to ask of them to do all the work is just something that like something else has to give, and I'm just not quite sure what we have the availability from a staffing perspective to give, to freak them up. We, we just added meeting minutes to their job descriptions that they weren't doing before, you know, we had a third party doing meeting minutes. So now they've that, they've slowly fit that in for me so that we can have that on a regular basis. Um, it's just one of those things that like you got, we got it, you pull a rope on one end, it obviously gets shorter on the other end, so we've just got to figure out where it goes. So yes, I agree with you and I'm not quite sure how to make that happen. However, the one place we have legal room is the public hearing notices and the notice of decision, that's state statutes. The preliminary noticing of the pending applications, that's us, that's in our local regulations. So this big, long-winded thing was both to inform you guys and do you want us to look at changing the inland wetland regulations, which isn't an easy task, it requires a public hearing, it has to go the deep, it has to, you know, do all sorts of things to try to parse that out from having to be published in a newspaper and instead having it be published online, of which case then we can start to set, we set up maybe some of this framework that that can easily get expanded to some of that other stuff.
Those, you're saying those, you're talking about notices specific to inland wells, I, I'm miss, I'm sorry.
So our local inland wetland regulations allows, not allows us, requires us to notice in the newspaper pending applications in order for the public to understand that they have 14 days to petition for a public hearing. If this commission votes on it to be a regular hearing, that's not state statutes. The public hearing, the notice of decision, that's state statutes, I have no wiggle room there, we got to do it.
And our regs don't talk about that.
They do, they mirror what the state says, because the state requires us to do it.
So if the state changes their regs, is, we're going to have to change our regs again?
Yes.
So then let's just do it ahead of time.
Yeah.
I think understanding how to change some of our regs is not the worst thing for us anyways. We've not done it since I've been here, I know some have been here longer than me, but.
Yeah, I mean, we can't change our regs to go against the state, like we can't change our regs to state public.
But maybe we can say it shall be, shall be advertised in accordance with state regulations or something, that way we don't have to.
As amended, yeah.
Yeah, you don't have to back and do it. I just know how expensive it is to put anything in the paper.
Right.
Yeah, and I also.
And it just got more expensive now.
And nobody looks at it anymore.
That's what I mean, I, I would support starting the process, because it's not going to happen overnight.
Yeah.
Still a month away.
So at the very least, we'll start to look at.
And you could still do it if you, you know.
So for us to hold this public hearing to change our regs, are we going to have to pay?
Publish it? Yeah, absolutely.
Yes.
$400 every single.
Yes.
Plus or minus.
I, I, I support doing that.
Changing the regs.
Yeah.
So we'll look at changing the regs for the preliminary notice so that it gets out of publishing in the newspaper and we do it online. And as part of that, we can set up the general framework and then it'll be easily transferable to.
Say we follow the state regulations and if they switch, we can switch with them.
Right.
I know, I've also asked a question before, and I think maybe others have felt this way as well, but the concept of moving the process along for applicants and the possibility of making a hearing a public hearing, the downside to that is that sometimes you don't need it, but you, and then you have to pay for it through the publishing of it. If, if it's a streamlined process that happens faster and it doesn't cost the town anything, maybe that's something we can revisit in the future, if all of that comes to pass.
I have visited the efficiency question, because yes, this has been asked a bunch of times. I have looked at it every which way. It's this petition.
Yeah, you can't do it.
Aspect of it that doesn't allow us to speed it up. So the only thing we kind of came up with is now that we have a dedicated inland wetland person, um, as compared to what we previously had, which was a zoning and wetland enforcement officer, he can draft the resolution a little quicker or faster or pre the voting, but we're stuck in this. They submit to us to the office. The next regularly scheduled meeting is the statutory receipt date. So now this is what starts the clock for review and also our clock, starts the clock for the petition. We have to wait those 14 days. So if it's a regular hearing, we have to wait 14 days. So the soonest we can do it, vote on it, is the next meeting. If it's a public hearing, you got, you, the commission is the one that is the only body that is allowed to make a decision on whether it can be a public hearing, so they have to go in front of you.
The applicant can't request a public hearing.
I have talked to legal about it, because statutorily, there are only three reasons that it become a public hearing. It's a significant activity, there's a petition, or it's of public interest. That's it.
Makes sense, because even when they were talking about St. Jude's, the town came in front of us saying they wanted it to be a public hearing, but we still had to hear it and then.
Yeah, but a lot of times the applicants will do that, because they know it's probably going to be a public hearing, they just don't want to have to waste a meeting or two, having you learn about the thing only to make that, that determination. Let's not waste everyone's time.
That's why I was saying, if the applicant can check a box that says, I want this to be a here, I know it's going to be one, let's start the clock today instead of in a month.
I asked that specific question to one of the attorneys that literally wrote the book on what's legally required in the state of Connecticut, and I was told, no.
Because they get paid by the hour.
So you were told no, just to be clear, so you were told no that we can't.
No, that the applicant can't.
They can't determine it.
Determine that they, they can't look at me and say, hey, it's a public hearing, can you just schedule this as a public hearing? The commission has to make the decision. The flip side of this is currently, as it stands, the town of Monroe, although there's an application fee, our publishing of legal notices is, is separate, it's just separate buckets of money. So the publishing actually comes out of our predetermined budget that we set at the beginning of the year for what we think legal notices are going to be. So if every single time someone just thought that the process would go faster and they want to publish it, that costs us money every single time that happens. So we also don't want to really give them control of like how we use. Not that that's a reason why.
We could change the fee schedule.
The thing is, it's not going to, it won't speed up the process that much, because in my, my experience, engineers don't come in 100% ready.
Right.
They come in almost ready, they come in a month before they should. It also gives staff time to review the application and give them comments and respond. If they came in day one, you'd see it as a public hearing, you'd have questions, it's going to the next month anyway.
Yeah, so I guess I could slow it down.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
And that is true, I will say that town engineer De Mayo and staff are pretty quick to try to get comments to them, to give them an opportunity to give something, so by the time it does get to this commission, there's already been a couple back and forths on this side. So what they're giving you is something realistic that could potentially get approved.
Okay, do you need any motion to proceed?
No, we'll start to look at the regulations to try to take out the preliminary, um, notification in the newspaper for pending applications and try to go digitally and then talk to IT about um, how that could potentially look on the website in a more user-friendly way.
Then if we went that route, we would have to know when the state changes, is that what you were saying before? So, I mean, I think, I think it's a great idea, right? But I just think that we need to realize there's some overhead with that as well, in that you have to keep track of when that changes so that we know, right?
Oh, that house bill, I trapped like a hawk. Yeah, yeah, that is on all of our radars. The, the town planners in the state of Connecticut all have a large email chain, and that is something that is talked about on the record.
Yeah, they're just trying to protect the newspaper. Good chunk of money they make.
Good luck with that. All right, uh, what park? Beach Pavilion?
This Park Beach Pavilion, uh, bringing this to your attention, there's a proposal from the town. Yep, the plan is in front of you. It's 90, it's 90, almost 97 feet off of the water's edge down by Wolf Park. Um, and it's a pavilion that's being proposed. It's, uh, the ground disturbance would consist of, uh, six 12-inch sonotubes, um, and then one smaller sonotube to accommodate a barbecue grill off to the side of the pavilion. It's being brought to you for your, um, approval, whether it be an agent approval or a commission approval, if you want to see it.
The, the question is, is typically non-residential items come to the commission no matter what? So this is a non-residential item, however, it's in sand.
90 square.
Six point. It's almost 100 feet off of the water's edge, it is all sand, but because it is a public project.
Where is it on the property? I'm kind of.
So, okay, so everybody knows what Snack Shack is?
Yeah.
Snack Shack is all the way off to the right.
Wait a minute, this is at the.
No, it's up there. This is down at the lake.
Yeah.
This is down at the lake.
So the lake is over here, the baseball fields are up here?
Yes, yes.
Like you come in. Is this parking lot, is that?
This is like the.
No, 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 that's all sand. That's all sand. This is, uh.
He said it's over.
All right, so if you're standing at the water's edge and you're looking at the Snack Shack, all the way to the left, on the beach.
The main entrance.
Oh, this is the beach, so this is like the playground back here.
Yes, yes.
This is the Snack Shack.
Oh, this is actual on the beach itself, okay, I got it.
It's on the, it's on the beach, it's on the sand.
Playground's back here, Snack Shack's over here.
Yes, correct.
Where is the boat, where's the boat launch, you know, the V? There, there's a, there's a, there's a launch into.
Oh, that would be farther to the left, farther to the left.
Okay, that's what I thought, yep. Yep.
So the question is, is the commission, do you want this to come as a full inland wetland application, of which case then there's nothing to do, we'll come in front of you, or do you entertain having it be an agent approval?
If it was, if it was a residential property, it wouldn't even be in front of you.
Right, but.
It's a town project, it's a town project.
Check his agent.
You want the agent to prove it? I just think town interest might, they might want to have a, any kind of say, that's all. Rather err on the side of caution on that. Yes, I think you guys can handle it, but.
Yep.
In public interest.
Want to see it as a.
As a public hearing?
You'll make that determination. Again, when we talk about staff resources, before we go through the process of putting together a full application, we just wanted to confirm. We didn't want to come to you guys and then say, oh, it could then have been an agent approval, um, before we make the.
Two and a half.
Yeah.
Talk to James about that.
What the hell was he thinking? Finding his face there. Purposely was screwing with you.
All right. That's it?
So commission approval?
Yes, we don't have to vote on anything, we're just.
We don't need a motion for that.
All right.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
I can't make the motion.
We do.
Motion for valuable practice.
We have a motion to adjourn, we have a second.
I'll second.
We have a second, mate. All in favor?
All right.